Call the meeting in the Hammond Common Council for May 27th order. Wedge of allegiance.
Eternal God, our Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. Thank you for this day that you have made. We thank you for each and every one of the people that are here today. We thank you for every scholarship recipient. We thank you as we continue to go into this summer that you continue to cover and keep our students as they travel along their ways, continue to keep our fire and our police safe, and we thank you for covering the city of Hammond in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Galwinski.
Here.
Zalinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Orpul.
Here, let the record show nine present, seven in chambers, two by Zoom. Mayor?
Hi, thanks. It's good to see the council. Thanks, everybody, for being in City Hall today. It's nice to see all the young people here. Congratulations for all the students that are in the audience today from all across the school city of Hammond that are coming here to receive scholarships today. Congratulations. It's great to see all these young faces out there coming to City Hall to watch their government in action. So I want to start off and thank Councilman Kowinski and the Hammond Mohawks for throwing in a great party yesterday. It was, I mean, it's Memorial Day parade, so I wouldn't say party, but the weather was perfect, the residents were out in force, it was a great time all around, lots of entrance, bands, music, just a good time all around in North Hammond yesterday. Hammond Mohawks have been doing it for a long time. I don't remember a much more perfect afternoon than yesterday. It was packed and perfect weather. We don't get that very often in the region. So congratulations to North Hammond and the Hammond Mohawks. Want to start off also with my activity log. Met with Hammond Sanitary District officials, attorneys, and my administrative staff to discuss pending litigation. We have a couple lawsuits with the Hammond Sanitary District. I don't know if it's going to get to the level where we need to start talking. I'm sure you're vaguely aware of some of the stuff, but it's good to stay close to the district because they're dealing with big numbers over there. Also, another North Hammond story, Councilman Mark, Ms. Sharon Stolars, and I had a phone conversation over the last couple of weeks, really nice resident of North Hammond, big fan of Plasky Park. I know Councilman Mark's also a fan of Plasky Park. So thank you to Ms. Stolars for having a nice conversation with your mayor. We held Mayor's Night Out in the 3rd District. I want to thank Councilman Berry for hosting Mayor's Night Out. It was a great night. Myself, along with the city team, attended the International Conference Convention of Shopping Centers Convention in Las Vegas. The city Hammond, for the first time ever, had a booth at the convention and talked to hundreds of developers. It was, it was really, I'm really glad, it's taken me a long time before we had a booth there. I'm really glad we got a booth. I could tell you, we pitched two pieces of property. We decided to approach it instead of a shotgun approach, focus on two really developable pieces of property. Two properties we were pushing was, one in the 4th District was, I called it a haunted house property. We didn't pitch it as a haunted house property, but that's what we call it in City Hall. The other is what we call the gateway property in the 2nd District at the border of the 1st and 2nd District. We had professional handouts. We had people representing hundreds of millions of dollars, and we handed out lots of our materials. I felt really good about the whole, whole trip. So I want to thank everybody that attended. I know there was a few council members there as well, so I want to thank them for coming along also. Hopefully, I'll be able to report in the next couple of months some serious interest to the point where we need to start getting the council involved because that's the goal. Had lunch with Bill Hanna from the Dean and Barbara White Foundation. Him and I touched base on what's going on with the YMCA expansion. As you all know, we're under a challenge to get the YMCA expanded to the water park that's going to go towards 165th. We have some obstacles in the way of that. My economic development team and I are working overtime to try to make that happen. Met with David Pavlik. David Pavlik's a person that's very interesting. He's coordinating the investors that are lining up hundreds of millions of dollars to invest in the Hammond Data Center. I could safely say hundreds of millions of dollars are behind this young man. We had a meeting in City Hall talking about everything that's going on with our proposal. It was on the front page of the newspaper. If everything goes the way we hope it goes, we could have a data center worth $7 billion sitting on the Lake Michigan shoreline right next to our current data center, which would present amazing opportunities for the students behind us because we could literally fund a program like College Bound for eternity with, with an investment like that. So to talk to Mr. Pavlik and to get on the same page as him is very important. If this goes the right way, I remember, I remember there was a comment in a council meeting about six months ago about, hey, College Bound's great, but if we can find a permanent funding source for College Bound, this would be a permanent funding source for College Bound if it goes the way we think. And I tell you, I think we have a decent shot of landing this thing, and we have a development agreement worked out that's extremely beneficial for our city over the next 20 years. So let's keep our fingers crossed. You're going to start to see action on that front. Redevelopment's going to start to see action on that front, and the city council's going to start to see action on that front, and we're getting documentation together to prepare, to show you what's going on there. So we do have obstacles in our way. One of them is power. We're talking about something that would be the largest customer in NiSource, the largest customer by far, would be this data center that we're talking about. So we have major obstacles to get over, but if we can land this proposal in our city, that's, that's an amazing opportunity for our state, not just for Hammond, for Indiana. It'd be one of the biggest, so. And last but not least, multiple meetings with personnel and the chief of staff over department head and personnel issues. I spoke a little bit at the council lunch today. I know I can only meet with four of you at a time, but we have a personnel issue going on in the city I prefer not to talk about over the microphone. If you want to find out what's going on, obviously, I'll inform my bosses, the Hammond City Council, but it's something I prefer not to talk about over the microphone. So I don't know if you have any questions, but I'm here for any questions you have. I know today we have the bond going for the Port Authority. I know we've talked about that before. A lot of work going to be done with the docks at the Port Authority, the break wall at the Port Authority is a very important bond. So I don't know if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
Thank you very much. Have a nice day, everybody.
Item number four, the Common Council Scholarship Award.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Over the past 25 years, the Hammond Common Council has been proud to offer 15 $1,000 scholarships to our Hammond students. Some of you who are here this evening, congratulations, you are a recipient of that $1,000. So what I'm going to do, I would, I would really like if your principal was here to introduce you. If they are not here, I will certainly do that, and you can tell us a little bit about yourself. So first of all, from Bishop Knoll Institute, is Mrs. Pastrick here, the principal? No. Okay. Is Anna D. Littori here from Bishop Knoll?
Hi. Congratulations. Thank you.
Here is your certificate. I'll take Bishop Knoll. And if you would tell us a little bit about yourself and where you plan on going to school and what you plan on studying.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Anna, and I'll be going to Indiana University Bloomington this coming fall. I'll be studying business management at Kelly with a minor in biology.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman, just so everybody understands, there'll be, Jake got his camera finally, so.
Okay.
There'll be a group picture at the end.
Afterwards, yes, if everyone would hang around so we can get a group picture. Alrighty. Is Ms. Harrison here from Hammond Central? If you wouldn't mind stop stepping up, please. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Face with an email.
Yes, I know. Here's the list of all the students, if you would like to call them up and give them...
I am very proud to announce that we have a few recipients in the audience today from Hammond Central High School, Mr. Giovanni Bailey Hanna. Could you please come on up?
Giovanni, you want to tell them a little bit about yourself, where you're going to school?
Okay. I'm Giovanni Bailey Hanna. I'm going to school at Purdue Northwest. I'm going to major in criminal justice. Yeah, yeah.
Tonight Gregory Dodson is not in attendance, but he is another recipient of the award tonight. But we also have Marcus Browder in the audience. Can you come on up?
Congratulations, Marcus.
Hello, I'm Marcus Browder, senior at Hammond Central High School for college. I am planning on going to college for basketball, so I have committed to a Juco. I'm not too sure if I am going to decommit or not depending on, you know, what's best for me in my future, but when I do get to university, which I'm planning on, I will be studying in engineering and architecture. So, yeah.
Go, Marcus.
Thank you. From the Hammond Academy of Science and Technology, I know Dr. Sneddon is not here. Is Ms. Tracy Miss here?
Yes.
And Ms. Mrs. Curriculum Director. Here's the list of all the names. There we go.
Thank you. Deb can't be here today. She's doing eighth grade promotion, so I'm stepping in. Our couple recipients that we have, I know is here, Bianca Solano. Come on down. Congratulations.
My name is Bianca Solano, and for college, I will be attending Purdue Northwest, and I will be majoring in early childhood education.
Another Hess recipient is Oriana Nava.
My name is Oriana Nava. I'm going to be going to UIC, and I plan on majoring in biological sciences.
I have four other recipients that are not here. Apamipo Adapujo, Lila Vega, Jamie Lorenzo Orozco, and Emmett Burn Swipes.
Alrighty, and is Ms. Wheeler here from Morton High School?
Good evening, I'm Tiara Redman. I'm the dean of students at Morton High School, and I'm happy to present our scholarship recipients with their award. So I do see, since I know that one of our scholarship recipients is here, I want to honor him first, Eduardo Arcio.
Hi, I'm Eduardo Arcio, and I'm going to Purdue University to study computer sciences.
Our next scholarship recipient is Jemira Ellis, Kalen Ford, Naya Dodson, and Bianca Pointer Thompson. So the students couldn't be with us here this evening, but still very grateful that they were able to receive this scholarship. Thank you.
So those in attendance want to step forward and take a picture up front here, please.
I do want to say thank you. I do want to say thank you to all of the students who came to receive their certificates. Thank you, and good luck in the future.
Can we get the school representatives, too? Everybody pray for this chair, would you?
Call nine five. Pray for Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get yours you wanted, sir. Yeah, we can take a two or three minute break so people can leave if they want to.
Maybe.
Oh, for God's sake.
We'll continue with the meeting for the record. Councilman Tyler is present in chambers now. He was present on Zoom a minute ago. Right? Item number seven, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes. Councilman Rakos.
Make a motion to approve minutes.
Second. A motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilman Kowinski, and I'm sorry, Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I request that minutes be placed on record.
So, so noted. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Ayes have it. Item number eight, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
That's item number six, by the way. I'm two ahead, so go ahead. Councilwoman Vines.
Are you a yes, number six? Yes, I move for approval of claims dated May 13th, 2025, and ending with claims dated May 21st, 2025, claim number 4098 through claim number 4498 inclusive in the amount
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I would like to amend in claim number 4499 in the amount of $8,303.00 for the homebound program.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick roll call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Orpul.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed on the amendment. Clerk Golick roll call on the claims as amended.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Orpul.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number seven, public hearings, there are none. Item number eight, communications. Does anybody have any communications?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
HC3 and myself will be proud to announce that this, the Springs Hessville Community Cleanup Saturday, May 31st, we're going to meet at HC3 headquarters at 2823 Martha, behind Hessville Restaurant, at 9:00 a.m. Provide light snacks and breakfast in the morning, and then lunch when done. All residents, students, and businesses are invited, and we hope to see people there.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything on the communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Rakos.
Tough job today. The following weekend, June 6th, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Saturday from 12:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., June 6th and 7th, in the 67 and 6800 blocks of Kennedy, we'll have our, I don't know, 10th, 11th, something like that, Live in the Ville. We'll have plenty of activities for the kids and everything else. We got entertainment on both nights. We also have a parade, this time it's a, not, not a, it's a, what's it called? What kind of parade is that?
Costume.
Costume parade. Lighted costume parade. That's this, the following weekend, June 6th and June 7th, Live in the Ville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything on the communications? Anybody else have anything on the communications? Communications are now closed. Item number nine, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, council as a whole will be bringing out 2511.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Go for it.
I will continue with the announcement of the community and crime watch meetings. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, June 3rd, 6:00 p.m. at the VFW across from Harrison Park. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, June 19th, 6:00 p.m. at the HC3 building, community center, I should say, on Martha Street. And the Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, June 12th, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. Once again, I urge everyone to come out to a crime watch meeting, find out what's going on in your neighborhood, and how you can help with your neighbors and, and the children in the neighborhood, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Capital Improvement Board did not meet this past previous Monday, so there'll be no report tonight. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Oh, wait a minute. We need an ordinance to be brought out on the committee, council as a whole.
I did say it, 2511.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry.
Yes.
That's my part timers kicking in.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't speak loud enough.
Sorry. So item number 10, ordinance, third reading and final passage.
Ordinance number 25-11, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, approving and authorizing the issuance and sale of revenue bonds of the City of Hammond, Indiana, to procure funds to finance certain projects recommended by the Hammond Port Authority, together with expenses in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2511.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, this is a $25 million bond over 20 years. It's to repair the docks and the break wall at the marina. The bond will be paid for with all rents, fees, rates, and other charges imposed, or any source of income received by the Port Authority.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Orpul.
Yes, let the record show, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Orpul, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 11, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance number 2512, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Spitali, an ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes, and amending ordinance number 8514, which is an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with a comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as the 60177th Street and 626-177th Street.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move for first and second reading with intent to consider 623-25 with council as a whole at 5:15 p.m. Thank you.
Is there a public hearing attached with that?
Yes, public hearing.
On 623?
Yes, 623 at 5:15.
The public hearing will be during the regular council meeting, correct? Yes.
Correct.
Is there a second? Motion's been made by Councilman Emerson, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
This is a, an ordinance to C1 to C4, local commercial to local commercial, C1 to C4 on 623-25. And it's for the property commonly known as 60177th Street and 626-177th Street. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number 11, resolutions. There are none. Item number 12, new and unfinished business. Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to go back to the Memorial Day event yesterday. That was, again, sponsored by the Hammond Mohawks. I want to thank them for keeping the parade tradition intact, and also want to thank the city of Hammond for all the work they did in getting the area prepped, as well as bringing bleachers, a podium, and chairs. I want to thank Commissioner Mike Repay for attending and supporting the parade with a financial donation, as well as being the guest speaker at the memorial service. Takes a lot of planning and effort to pull this off, and it was done very well. And I want to especially recognize Hammond ROTC, and the posting of colors by the ROTC. It was incredibly professionally done, and, and I can tell that it's growing, the ROTC in Hammond, and kudos to all the adults who are mentoring those, those young people. And I want to also give a tip of the hat to the Hammond Academy of Performing Arts for the band that came and played tunes at the memorial service. They did a fine job, as well as a, a couple of the soloists on their instruments were just a wonderful addition. And I want to thank all the people who attended the memorial service. The parade is fun and exciting, but it's really intended to get the crowd to the memorial service, so we can pay homage to those who paid the final cost and price for freedom. So, thank you to everybody who participated in the Memorial Day service and made it a success.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? I have two things. Number one, I'd like to thank the Hammond Police Department, who contacted about some graffiti over there on the old Pioneer Tap, and it was removed. So, thank you. And I know Gary, in your comments at the last meeting, you brought up the NIPSCO lights being out. I know, I don't, I can't speak for everyone, but I know in my district, there's an app we use in the engineering office to report burnout lights. There's some that I've reported four or five times, over a year period, that don't get fixed, for some, for whatever reason. And then there's others, when you report them, they're fixed immediately, so, it's kind of in response to what you brought up at the last meeting. It's not that they go unnoticed. I usually go to the, I usually make a request to the engineering office, and then I follow up, and they show me the email that they sent that reports them on that app. That being said, does anybody else have anything to add?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, I wanted to thank the Hammond Police Department for their open house on Saturday. It was really well attended. The police officers interacted with the kids, and the kids were digging it, so, it was, it was just really nice to see so many people out there, and I wanted to say thank you.
And that reminds me of one other thing. We also attended the police memorial service that got, because of the cold and the rain, got moved inside the Hammond Civic Center, and I always recommend that if you want to know what the Hammond Police Department does, go to one of them things, because it's very sad when they're honoring people that gave their lives for this city, and it doesn't matter how long ago it was, they were still willing to do it, and it's always a solemn event.
Yes, absolutely.
Anybody else?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I attended the open house, and I used to work at a county jail back in the day, and it's amazing to me how technology has changed everything. Wow, it's, it's unbelievable. And we got the tour, and that's where I realized it's really changed a lot. The TVs were dinky, and this, this was a fairly new jail, and, the one I worked at, and it was unbelievable to see how technology has changed, and basically, fingerprinting is all different now, and, and everything regarding the tour was, was great. And I also watched the dogs, and, you know, it was great with the, with the, demonstrating the dogs for the canine unit, and it was great, great day.
Yeah, that's, always blows my mind when you see the, what they got over there compared to what I remember, I mean, what is, what was downstairs, and all the room in the jails and all that, but, anybody else? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, Gary. Public expression, Gary. My dad always said you talk too much.
Good evening, council. So, yeah, thank you, Councilman Worpel, for bringing that out. Yeah, because at this point, it's still going on almost three months, and lights aren't fixed. I mean, it seems like NIPSCO has no accountability to get things done. I mean, I can understand two weeks to a month getting lights fixed, but, you know, it's getting ridiculous, three months, and, you know, if we're paying for this stuff, you know, what is the accountability of NIPSCO? And I get the data center, yeah, you could, priority, you gotta really get that, but still, somebody should be responsible for this. You know, we got three of them out in our neighborhood, you know, and, and I don't know who pays the bill, you know, is it through engineering? And engineering does know, I reported the numbers, and Councilman Tyler knows, too, so I met Mayor's Night Out and gave him the numbers, so, but, you know, I'll keep on coming and saying, hey, if they're fixed or not, I'll let you guys know. But, you know, appreciate it, and hope you guys all know, because, you know, lighting is important, at least it is to me, you know, it keeps the city looking nice and all that too. Like, Kennedy Avenue is beautiful with all the ornamental lighting. It really is. So, but, we do need the other lighting, too, in our streets and alleys. So, anyway, but, you know, just know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now entertain that motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.